Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Hoffman Estates Transportation and Road Improvement Committee to order for November 9, 2020. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Mills.
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palavas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I look for a motion to approve the minutes of October 12, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no items under new business this evening. The only thing we have on our agenda is a report for information-only purposes, the Transportation Division Monthly Report. Anything to question on that? Any highlights? Anything the department wishes to highlight? Nope. I take that as a no. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will mark that received and filed. And we'll go on to President's report.
Okay. Another exciting week. Tuesday, the 3rd, we had our EOC meeting. I understand there was an election going on that day, too. Then, in the evening, we had our Celtic Fest Commission meeting. Wednesday, the 4th, they attended the Northwest Municipal Conference Executive Board meeting by Zoom. And then we had the Chapel Improvements Board. Everybody was at Wednesday night. And Friday, they zoomed again for the National League of Cities Transportation Committee meeting of November. Saturday, Sunday, rather, trustee Newell and I presented to Brian Lenstrom with the Great Citizen Award. He lives on Westbury Hill, one of his neighbors who had craters in her air conditioner, and did such a great job. The HVAC people came and said they couldn't have done any better, and he did. He totally restored it. So that was cool. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We have no items in review. If there is nothing else to come before this committee, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Planning, Building, and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this November 9, 2020. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palavas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
We do have a quorum. And I'm looking for approval of the minutes of three different meetings. First, October 5, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody notice any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Well, I should ask, any opposed? The ayes do have it. October 12, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody notice any corrections or deletions on those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. October 26, 2020, our special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions on those? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We go to new business. First, a request by SVAP, Hoffman Plaza LP, for approval of a site plan amendment to change the detention basin design and the conditions of approval for Outlet 4 to allow an extension in time to complete site improvements at Hoffman Plaza Shopping Center.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Who wants to take this? Jennifer?
This is a request by the owners of the Hoffman Plaza Shopping Center. Hoffman Plaza is located on Rose, east of Roseell Road. They're seeking site plan amendment to change the design of the detention basin and conditions of approval for Outlet 4 to allow an extension of time to complete those detention basin improvements. As you may recall, back in 2017, Hoffman Plaza was granted a site plan amendment for a major site redevelopment of the property, which included the occupancy of the Burlington site. As part of that approval, the existing detention basin, which is located along Apple Street between two residential lots behind the shopping center, was to be dredged, regraded, and re-landscaped per the Village and MWRD requirements. Construction did begin on the detention pond during the Burlington construction, but it was delayed initially due to the village replacing the Apple Street culvert, which is the outflow for the pond. That work was completed as part of the Apple Street reconstruction in 2019, spring of 2019, after which the owners were directed to complete the detention basin work. In June of 2019, site plan approval was granted for Outlet 4, which is the small retail food building along Roseell Road. Since the detention basin work was still outstanding at that time, a condition of the approval was included, which required the detention basin work to be completed by September 2019 and prior to the occupancy of Outlet 4. The owners have worked on completing the improvements. They've faced some challenges, but they do have a potential tenant for Outlet 4 and seeking to amend the original condition of approval so that they can extend the deadline and allow occupancy. They have indicated that the work will begin in the spring of 2021 and be completed by June of 2021. If the board does choose to amend the site plan, there are a number of conditions that the staff recommends that are on page 2 of the report. And we do have the representatives from the owner here as well.
Has the petitioner agreed to these four conditions? You'll have to get up on the mic.
Identify yourself.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Cleary with Sterling Organization, representing the owner.
You say yes, you are agreeing to those four conditions?
Yes, we do.
What was the reason for such a delay?
Well, we graded the pond at the same time we were building the Outlet 4 building with the same contractor. And that work completed in the spring of 2020. And the pond was shaped and the banks were stabilized. And the bottom was just wet. We couldn't stabilize the bottom. We couldn't plant it. We couldn't seed it. And stayed wet all throughout the summer. So, in the fall of 2020, we decided that we needed to take some other course of action to stabilize the bottom of the pond. And we all agreed with the help of the village engineer to use aquatic plants instead of seed. And by the time that was determined, it was too late in the season to plant the aquatic plants. That's why we're requesting time to do work in the spring of 2021.
Now, I know May was totally wet, but, you know, anywhere from July through September was totally dry.
It was, yeah.
And it still didn't dry out, huh?
It did not, no.
Wow. Okay. Anybody with any other questions? Trustee Mills?
This is towards staff. Now, the existing security that we are holding is 76,700. If we end up having to do this work ourselves, will that cover, is that enough to cover it?
Yeah, we're confident that that would be enough to cover the work.
Okay. Well, hopefully, this would be the last extension we can, we'll have to do.
Agreed. Trustee Palavas?
After all that hot weather, do you have any idea from an engineering perspective why that didn't dry out? I mean, is it just that low and it just held on?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think, I think the obvious answer is that the bottom of the pond was just too low. It was just lower than the, than the outfall. You know, when we, when we initially finished the grading, we thought, well, it was going to dry out. You know, it was just the spring. It was going to dry out. At some point during the summer, it became obvious that it wasn't happening. So then it was a decision. What's the right thing to do? Do we try to, we took more survey points on the, on the pond, determined that it was, in fact, too low. That's why it wasn't draining. And then just went through the big, had the dialogue with the village engineer, what we do, and just decided that the best course of action at that point was aquatic plants.
Do we have to add any fencing as a result of this?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to add any fencing so that...
It's totally fenced.
It will be fenced, okay.
Yeah, it is fenced now. The pond is graded. The sides are stabilized. It's just the bottom that is unstabilized at this point.
Okay.
Not after it's completed, though.
Yeah, I am talking.
For safety reasons. Will there be a reason we have to change any, that any changes will need to be made now that it's going to be a wet pond instead of dry?
Well, I, I'm not sure that I'm qualified to answer that. I would think I would defer that question to staff. In my, in my opinion, the answer is no. But, you know, it's totally fenced. And as far as the wet bottom of the pond, the water is about four inches deep at the, at the maximum.
Okay.
Peter, were you going to add something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else with any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Second is a request by Petro Auto LLC for a resolution supporting the class, I'm sorry, Cook County Class C classification for property tax assessment purposes for the site located at the northeast corner of Higgins Road and Glen Lake Boulevard, which is 1300 Higgins Road.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Kevin, you want to explain why we're doing this all over again?
Yeah, I will. So, yeah, Class C in Cook County, just to give you guys a refresher, Class 6B that often comes forward is for industrial, and the Class 7C is for commercial. The just straight Class C is for properties that have some contaminated land, and the owner has to remediate those soils or whatever the problem is before they can redevelop the site. So this, it's a little strange at Cook County, but like the Class 7C and the Class 6B that's been supported before goes through their Economic Development Bureau for approval, whereas this Class C goes just straight to the assessor's office. So they're not the same people necessarily reviewing it. So, that being said, this is coming back. The board approved a resolution for this application back in December 2016, so four years ago. And the owner, who is here tonight, if you have questions for him, submitted the application right then, in 2016, to Cook County and got no response, and so submitted again in 2019, and still got no response until mid-2020 here. The county finally did respond and said, well, your municipal resolution here doesn't support, doesn't say the right things to support the application, so you need a new one. So, as such, that's why they're asking for a new one tonight. That states everything within the Cook County code that the resolution needs to state. And, and staff has received and reviewed the application again. And everything that we say in the application, we have received it and he has done. But he still needs this Class C. Obviously, you've driven by the property. You've seen that he's fixed it up. He's operating, but was still counting on this and didn't want to wait these four-plus years before getting approval from the county to start redeveloping a site. So, that's why it's coming back.
Has the county indicated that they will approve this as soon as they get the new resolution?
Not to me, but I don't know if, Mr. Petrovich, if you want to come up and give your take on it.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, why don't you give your name and address again?
It's Chris Petrovich at 1300 West Higgins Hoffman.
Thank you.
I got, the last communication from the assessor's office was from their attorney, and he said that we need this resolution reworded. So that's why I cannot pass it over to Kevin. And we're kind of going from there. They said they might need more supporting documents, but they did not say.
Okay.
And that was about two months ago.
All right. Trustee Mills?
Is there going to be any problem, though, that it's already developed? I mean, you've started this back when it wasn't developed, so I'm hoping that won't cause another delay.
I don't see a problem with it. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem. I mean, dealing with the assessor's office, like pulling teeth over there, they, they don't want to respond to me and get the runaround and not much I could do. It's kind of out of my hands.
Good luck with that, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Four years is a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else with any other questions? Yes, trustee Palavas?
Kevin, how long is the 7C duration? Is it 12 years, like the 6B?
7C or just the C?
Just, just the C.
The C is like the 6B. It's a 12-year, reduces it for the first 10 years, and then that 11th and 12th, it kind of starts to step back up.
So, that's the way he'll be able to receive retribution for the 150,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And I will say, we don't know exactly for sure, but this time, I've, I've got a webinar Thursday, Mayor and I do, with our commissioner, Kevin Morrison, who's been fantastic to work with. So, my guess is when he does submit again, we could probably forward on to him and just ask him to help follow up on this.
That sounds like a sound idea.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Good luck.
Third, request approval of Northwest Housing Partnership, NWHP, as subrecipient to administer the community development block grant, the CDBG, Single Family Rehabilitation Program, and to approve execution of the proposed subrecipient agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Should we have a little explanation on this?
Absolutely. So this is our annual agreement, our annual subrecipient agreement with Northwest Housing Partnership, and they have administered our village single-family rehabilitation program for 14 years. And each year, we must enter into a subrecipient agreement with them to meet HUD requirements. And this funding is from CD, from HUD, and residents are able to make corrections to code issues or other safety issues at their homes with a 0% interest loan with the project completed through Northwest Housing Partnership. And this year, $65,000 was earmarked for this in the annual plan, and that was approved by the village board over the summer, on July 20, I believe it was. And, yeah, this basically outlines that 55,250 would be allocated for the, up to at least three projects during the program year, which began October 1. And, and then we also have 9750 for the administration costs for Northwest Housing Partnership.
Now, we have three requests after this regarding children's advocacy, Clearbook, and Wings. And does that money come out of this as well?
It's similar. It's actually, for those three other requests, it'll be our CDBG COVID funds. So, CDBGCV, as HUD calls it. And that is our $145,000 allocation that came out of the CARES Act earlier this year.
Okay.
Whereas, the Northwest Housing Partnership money is from our typical annual agreement with HUD, and that's out of our, I think it's approximately $245,000 that we're receiving for this next program year of just regular CDBG funds. That does, they don't need to be tied back to COVID in any way.
Great.
Other three agreements all require a tieback to COVID in some way.
Anybody with any questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion and a second say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Fourth is request approval of a subrecipient agreement with the Children Advocacy Center, CAC, of North and Northwest Cook County, to administer community development block grants, CDBG, funding for the CDBG eligible public services that will prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, the CDBG CV grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Five is request approval of a subrecipient agreement with Clearbook to administer community development block grants, CDBG, funding for a CDBG eligible public services that will prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, the CDBG CV grant.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mills?
We need to make a correction. If you, unless I'm reading it wrong, on page 3 of the, the agreement, I think when you did the boilerplate, you just picked up the same dollar amount from the one before this because it says, under payment, you shall not exceed 4,500. And yet, on the front page, it says 16,640.
That is correct. The 16,640 is correct.
I didn't see anything else that may have gotten duplicated, but...
That, that did carry through incorrectly, so...
Yeah.
We're, we're...
On this one and the next one, too.
Yes.
So, just wanted, for some reason, it caught my eye and I wanted to make sure you, and I apologize. I should have called you guys earlier today to remind you. But, yeah, that's the only, so it has to be us correct it, right?
Yes, we would have to amend it, I guess, to include that.
Okay. My apologies for that.
Who wants to make the motion to include that or correct it?
I'll make the motion to correct.
Second.
And what is the proper number?
It should be 16,640, not 4,500.
Okay. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Go to the general approval again. All those in favor of number five, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, and that's approved.
You don't want to repeat it again, huh?
No. I gotta do it again on this one anyway. Request approval of a subrecipient agreement with Wings to administer community development block grants, CDBG, funding for CDBG eligible public services that will prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, the CDBG CV grant.
I'll make the motion with a correction to page 3, item 8, payment. Second?
Second.
And what's that correction?
The correction will read, instead of 4,500, it should read 5,000.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody want a discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion as it's corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Seven, request approval of a resolution creating the Economic Development Commission of the Village of Hoffman Estates.
So moved.
Second.
We already have one. That's what kind of surprises me. Do we need just a new resolution or how?
I was told that we, we create. We don't amend.
We don't amend them? I've never heard that from a legal counsel before.
What was the issue on that again, Kevin?
Should we be amending the Economic Development Commission with this resolution or creating the Economic Development Commission anew?
I, I think you could do either.
Art, use your mic.
Do either.
Well, we already have a, I'm sorry, Chairman.
I agree. If we already have one, I don't see the point in approving and creating one because it's already created. I think alls we need to do is amend it as approved in the new resolution.
I'll just pipe in my limited, my limited knowledge. I do know that when we've, when we've amended these commissions in the past, it has been creating it again. And I, I wonder if it's because then all of the correct language is still held within one resolution, and you don't have to go back and check historical resolutions to kind of pull everything together if you just amend certain items.
Well, I mean, that makes sense as well, but shouldn't we disband the original one and then create the new one? I don't know.
That would make sense.
That's what I would think.
Yeah. Why don't we have a, before we approve this, why don't we have a motion to disband the Economic Development Commission as is, as it is now? And then we can go on to number seven.
All right, one question. If you were to disband the original one, then does that get rid of all your commission members that are on it? You're creating a new commission, so you're going to have to reappoint everybody. Is that the direction you're taking?
No.
No, you're right.
There are terms, then?
Right. We're, what we're doing is we're reducing the number from 13 to nine, really to kind of clear out a group of the people that haven't been showing up. Plus, we realized 13, it just grew to be bigger than it needed to be. You know, kind of like what we talked about at the last meeting on August 6.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
But it's just that you have people appointed now to a current commission.
Right.
Are they going to be carried over to this one, or, you need to clarify all that.
Yeah.
Before we approve it, I think.
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't know kind of the process for, really, it was just three fixes from the previous version in 2015 versus what you're seeing now. And then the 2015 was an, an issue of something new from 2003, which is when the original commission was created. So some things were changed. And really, it was the number, it was the, a couple of the duties in Section F, you know, we cleaned some of those up, really to make them current more than anything. You know, and that was, it was just kind of tightening up the resolution from where it was obsolete or the numbers were too many. But in terms of editing versus new, you know, I don't know what the process is there, but I'm, you know, I'm okay with doing whatever you all feel needs to be done. I mean, it was just really...
I think it'd be smoother if we just amended.
I agree. And it was just a cleanup of, you know, what the 2015 version had versus 2020.
And by amending it, I mean, you were, we're creating this new resolution anyway in a sense because it's going to read...
Yeah. I mean, the new resolution is in effect an amendment. You just, what we haven't done is highlighted what we're amending from 2015 to 2020 versus, other than, you know, the obvious, the number, and, you know, one of the duties in, in Section F.
Would it be better to defer this for a month until we get it straightened out?
Yeah, or...
If that's not a problem?
I, I don't, there's nothing critical that hangs in the balance of having this done right now.
I mean, you've got some great ideas and a great direction that you want to take it in.
It was just more of a, you know, kind of a house cleaning, you know, administrative tightening up of what we had talked about in August in terms of, you know, the number of memberships, some of the activities under duties that were more applicable to current day.
I mean, my advice would be just to come back and say, request approval of an amendment to the resolution creating the Economic Development Commission of the Village of Hoffman Estates.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, all the commissions I'm on, I can't ever remember, like when we grow a commission, we don't create a new commission.
No.
We just edit that line item.
Right.
Now, how many times have we grown commissions?
Or we reduced 4th of July.
Right, right, exactly. So I don't think we issued a new commission at that time. So, as I was sitting here thinking, I'm like, have I ever seen a new replace a, but nevertheless, yeah, we could, we could push it to either, if we want to do it sooner, a special or just next month.
Or we could just do it now.
I think it's better off to make sure what they're doing.
Yeah, because what you'd want to see is the, I'm assuming you'd want to see the 2015 version that's living now and what we're editing and proposing in the 2020 new or edited.
I guess that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to defer this to the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of the deferment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's deferred. It leads us with three reports for information only. First is the Planning Division Monthly Report. Anybody got any questions on that? That'll be received and filed. Second is Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Any questions for Code Enforcement? That'll be received and filed. And third is the Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. Yes, trustee Palavas?
I mean, I sent you all the link, but I just wanted to emphasize Kevin's video that him and Rick did. What a great job it was. And getting quite a fanfare from Twitter and all of the Facebook, you know, locations where it was dropped, and especially LinkedIn, which is more of the professional side of, you know, of the social media outlets. So, good job to you. Good job to Rick. I know he's probably back there somewhere, whatever camera I'm on. You know, it was, it was well done. And there's more coming. You know, it was, and it was kind of something that, you know, well, like, again, we talked about, you know, back at the August 5th or 6th, I forget what day it was, the, the meeting in August that we had where we kind of launched a bunch of ideas, so.
Okay. That report, anybody else with any other questions? That'll be received and filed. President's report.
Nothing else, Chairman Stanton?
Nothing else, Chairman Stanton?
Thank you. We have nothing and other or items in review for tonight, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the General Administration and Personnel Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates for November 9th, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairman Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Noah.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McClellan.
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. If I can get a motion for approval of minutes for October 12th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
May I have any questions, corrections? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. One new item under new business, request approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale of personnel property owned by the Village of Hoffman Estates, auction items.
So moved.
Second.
Suzanne, you have anything to add?
Hi, no, just wanted to let you know that this is just our typical Village surplus ordinance. This time around, we're including five vehicles, all of which have high mileage and have been deemed ready for public auction.
So, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion has been passed. Move on to reports for information only. Number one is a cable TV monthly report. We will go ahead and receive and file that. Number two is a Human Resources Management Monthly Report. I do see Patrick over there somewhere. We will receive and file that as well. Number three is a Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report. We will go ahead and receive and file that. Anything else in President's report? Mr. Mayor.
Nothing else, no, nothing else.
I see nothing in item, other or items in review. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.